Welcome to this meeting of the Overview and Scrutiny Management Board. My name is Councilor Adam Stokes and I am the Chairman of the Board. Councilor Tom Smith, the Vice-Chairman, is also in attendance to my right. Can I remind you that the audiovisual feed of this formal public meeting is being broadcasted live via the County Council's website and all your comments remain accessible online as the meeting recording remains on the Council's website? And with this in mind, I'd like to welcome the members of the public and the press watching this. I'd like to welcome the Executive Council and the Executive Support Councils who are attending our meeting, and I'd also welcome the corporate leadership team who are present today. I'd like to begin with a health and safety announcement, there is no fire drill plan this morning. In the event of a fire alarm sounding, we need to leave the council chamber through the doors behind you and leave the building through the reception into the front car park. We then need to wait in the car park for further instructions. Can I remind everyone to ensure their mobiles, laptops and iPads are on silent for the duration of this meeting? And also when invited to speak, can you please ensure that you switch on your microphone? Otherwise, those attending the meeting via Teams and members of the press and public listening to our meeting online won't be able to hear you. Please be aware that you need to speak directly into the microphones to be heard and the hearing loop is now activated. Request to be speak will be collated by the Vice-Chairman, so if you wish to speak during the meeting, can you please raise your hand and the Vice-Chairman will make a note. We will try to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to ask questions and make contributions. We will now move on to the formal agenda. So, item one, apologies for absent and replacement members. Andrew, do we have any, please?
We have apologies from Councilor Karen Lee with no replacement. We also have apologies from Councilor Rob Kendrick with no replacement. We also have apologies from Debbie Barnes, OBE, Chief Executive. Thank you.
Thank you for those. Item two, declarations of members' interests. Members of the Board are reminded they only need to declare any relevant interests which have not been declared on their declaration of pecuniary interest form. Do any members wish to declare an interest? No, I don't see any hands raised, so we'll move on to item three, which is the minutes of the meeting held on the 27th of February 2025. This is to confirm and sign the minutes from the last meeting of the Board as a correct record, and these can be found on pages five to 14 of the Agenda Pack. Do I have a proposal, please? Councilor Smith, do I have a second, please? Councilor Carrington, so all those in favour, please? That is unanimous from all those that are in attendance. Thank you. So announcements, item four, announcements by the Chairman, Executive Councils and Chief Officers. I have no announcements to make today, and to ensure efficient use of our time, report introductions, well, there is only one item, will be a maximum of five minutes, allowing ample time for discussion and consideration of the agenda item. I'm sure there'll be plenty of questions on that one. But before we move on, I do wish to take this opportunity, as we conclude this council term and this being the last OSMB meeting prior to the election, to extend my heartfelt gratitude to all the members of the Board and to all the officers who have diligently supported our work. Your commitment to enhancing the lives of Lincolnshire residents has been exceptionally good. Thank you. Executive Council announcements, do we have any? Nope. Officer announcements? Nope. Thank you. So we'll now move on to item five, consideration of callings. Andrew, are there any callings to consider, please?
We've received no callings, Chairman.
Thank you. Item six, consideration of council calls for action. Andrew, have we received any of those, please?
We have not received any calls for action, Chairman.
No, that's great, thank you. So we'll now move on to the main substantive item on the agenda, which is item seven, the local government reorganisation. Consideration of options for local government reorganisation and the submission of an interim plan to the Minister of State for Local Government and English Devolution. This is a pre-decision scrutiny report, and this can be found on pages 15 to 62 of the Agenda Pack, and this report outlines Lincolnshire County Council's response to a statutory government invitation to propose a single-tier local government reorganisation across Lincolnshire, including North and North East Lincolnshire, with an interim plan due by the 21st of March and final proposals by November 2025. The Leader of the Council and Executive Counselor for Resources, Communications and Commissioning is due to consider the report for a decision which will be further debated at the extraordinary council meeting on the 21st of March, and our actions are that we consider the report and determine whether we support the recommendations to the Leader set out on pages 18 and 19, and agree that our comments be passed to the Leader in relation to this item. So this report will be presented by Matthew Gerrard, Head of Policy. Over to you, Matthew, please.
Thank you, Chairman. In December, the Government set out new policy for local government with aspirations to widen and deepen devolution to all parts of England and to reorganise local government with a particular focus on the 21 two-tier areas such as Lincolnshire and adjoining unitary councils. In February, the council, along with the city, districts and borough councils and the adjoining unitary councils of North Lincolnshire and North East Lincolnshire, received a statutory invite to submit proposals for local government reorganisation for the area by the 28th of November this year. The invite also requested that councils prepare and submit an interim plan by Friday the 21st of March, with feedback to be provided by government officials to support the development of proposals for reorganisation. The decision report included in the papers brings forward that interim plan. This has been prepared based on criteria included in the statutory invite, which were also included in the paper and which were sent to us by government by way of letter. The criteria that proposals will be assessed against include that the proposal should achieve a single tier for the whole area with consideration given to a sensible economic area, including support for housing and business growth, that the council should be the right size to deliver efficiencies aiming for a population of 500,000 or more, with district council boundaries used as the building blocks for future council shape, that the proposal should prioritise delivery of high-quality and sustainable services, it should show how councils have worked together to meet local need and put forward proposals informed by local views, and the proposal should support devolution arrangements, either existing or future. The interim plan included in the papers considers options for one, two or three unitary councils against these criteria. An option for a single unitary council for the whole geography is not progressed further within the interim plan, as this would undermine the recently established Greater Lincolnshire Combined County Authority and the agreed economic geography of Greater Lincolnshire. Two options for two unitaries are proposed as having the greatest alignment with the criteria that has been set by government. A third option of three unitary councils has been considered but discounted due to the level of divergence from the criteria. It should be noted that that option has an indicative geography, but some of the reasoning in there could be applicable to any geography of three unitary councils. Overall, the information including the interim plan is an indicative assessment of these options. It's recognised that much more work will be required to develop the detailed proposal which we planned out in the coming weeks in order to meet the November deadline set by government. At this stage, we'd welcome comments on the interim plan. As you outlined at the beginning of the meeting, there'll be further debate at council towards the end of this week before an interim plan is submitted. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that introduction. Do we have any comments or questions? Councilor Key, please.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the summary. The thing that always comes into my mind is this business of the 500,000 people and how important that is. And I know, I was very careful to listen to what you said, and you said 500,000 or more. Now, one of these options, they're quite level. One of these options, they're not. So when you say or more, how many more can that actually be? And perhaps have we any other experience around the country of how big some of these unitary authorities are? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just bring on Commissioner Hill on that point, please.
Yeah, I think as much a political question as an administrative, so I'll do my best to answer. So the written criteria the government have sent, because this is a government proposal, it will be a government decision, so what we've been asked, what two-tier councils have been asked to do across the whole country, actually, where they are doing this arrangement, is to bring forward suggested plans as to how these new unitaries might look. So this is, whatever we decide on Friday is not a final decision, it's merely a suggestion that the government will be able to then look at and as part of the arrangement. Having looked at the various plans that are brought forward from places like Lincolnshire, I think there will be other, probably other plans put forward by other councils, not sure yet, government will look at them and then say, right, we like the look of that one or that one, they might say we don't like the look of any of them. They will then say, well, these are the ones that we expect councils to then work up a full business case. So this is very much the first stage, and what the government is expecting is councils to come back, areas to come back with, these are the sort of criteria you've got. So in terms of the written criteria, which is what I think we should focus on, the 500,000 is one of the criteria, not to disrupt services is another one, and I think that's particularly relevant to the county council, that obviously we have social care, some big services, highways, so if we are split up, that will be disruptive. Also not to respect, I think the word is respect, combined authority boundaries. So when you get to the situation, when you look at it altogether, it really does point to, with the Greater Lincolnshire population of 1.1 million, would seem to be pretty obvious that you are now, we are, the government is now looking at two half a million councils. So I think in terms of the various options you've seen, the discounted option is the one where a three council solution for Lincolnshire, and you'll see quite clearly that, A, it doesn't hit any of the government criteria, in particular the lack of disruption, it will be very disruptive, it will be more expensive, and you'll see from the work done by PWC that it actually will cost a lot of money, and it'll probably take about 10 years before you even see a return on that money. So the two, the recommendations are that there are two options put forward, and really it's about where the dividing line is between the two councils, shall we say, assuming you go for north-south. I mean, there is an east-west potential, but that frankly doesn't make sense for all sorts of reasons. So basically, what the recommendations are saying is, well, we think it'll be a two council solution, and we put forward two proposals, and really neither proposal hits all the criteria, because one proposal, obviously, I think proposal, which one is one and two, I can't remember, but a proposal where basically the whole of the county council area carries on as a unitary, that doesn't work for the northern bit in terms of population, but on the other hand, if you went for a split across the county, that doesn't hit the criteria in regards of minimising disruption and disruption to services. So I think it'll end up that it'll be a choice between those two criteria, and really we'll wait, let's see what the government says about it, because at the end of the day, it will be their decision and they will consult on their decision. I hope that helps, Councilor Key.
May I add a point of information, Chairman? Just on that, perhaps to help Commissioner Key, and as Commissioner Hill said, you know, that it is written, as a guiding principle, I'm reading from the schedule, the guidance, as a guiding principle, new councillors should aim for a population of 500,000 or more, and then it says, the next sentence is, there may be certain scenarios in which this 500,000 figure does not make sense for an area, and so it goes on. And then if I could just add, I don't know if colleagues are aware, but last week at the District Council's network, the Minister Jim McMahon actually said, when asked about the 500,000 limit that, you know, a lot of people are sort of talking about, rightly so, he said, if a proposal of 350,000 or 450,000 holds together with local consensus through the process, then it is acceptable. So he's now talking about as low as 350,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, please.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Commissioner Dill, because that is exceedingly helpful information and goes on to what I was going to say. Chairman, I have read this document with great interest and I fully support option one within this document, which is where we as a county council stay whole. Because when you read the document, Chairman, aside from one metric, the alternative costs more, does not deliver the continuation of services without disruption, and takes 10 years to even break even, and even then, Chairman, it goes into much more detail and says that population in terms of retirement age, et cetera, et al, is unbalanced and could potentially be harmful, and also there is a risk of deprivation issues with that construct. Every resident I have spoken to in my division, Chairman, nobody wants West Lindsay to be carted off and cast off into an authority that is a totally artificial construct, that has no boundary, no connection to the people, they wish to stay in Lincolnshire as part of Lincolnshire, Chairman. It's vital to a lot of my residents because they see it as we're being considered basically an unwanted cast off essentially in the option two proposal, and the residents I've spoken to and myself, Chairman, believe that we are a vital part of Lincolnshire as a county council, our council delivers brilliant services, is effective, works well, and as Commissioner Dill has said, the minister has now said publicly in the council's network, and also there was a statement in the House of Commons as well, that the figure of 500,000 is not in aspic, it's flexible, and surely, Chairman, it makes much more sense for the rural county council to stay whole, the two urban unitaries to come together as an authority, because they have shared interests, they're close together, in terms of employment, their employment types are similar, and it makes much more sense that we as Lincolnshire stay whole and continue to deliver for our residents to avoid disruption, and also it keeps the connection rather than an artificial construct, because we've seen before, Chairman, when artificial constructs are created and drawn on a map that have no relevance to people's lives, what happens to them? They don't last very long, Chairman, people become resentful of them and they wish to go back to how things were, and I don't think we should be forced down that route, Chairman, so I would wholeheartedly support option one and urge fellow councillors and this council to do the same. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Marfleet, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't agree with your comments on that one, I'm afraid. Tom? Casting off West Lindsay or East Lindsay back, my view has always been, we are one Greater Lincolnshire. I was born in Cleethorpes, Grimsby, grandparents from their, they're not an alien county, they're Lincolnshire. You speak to anybody, whether you're Scunthorpe or in Grimsby, they're Lincolnshire people. And unfortunately, they were casted aside some years ago when they developed a place called Humber Side, and it's wrong. The fit for Greater Lincolnshire is still, the best fit is one unitary, unfortunately, and I know we've now gone and put a mayor of a combined authority which causes half the issues, but when this council looked 10 years ago at the value that going to a unitary would do, there was only one that really stood out, and that was one greater, one unitary, and that generated 10 years ago, or maybe 12 years ago, 25 million. Option two was to have two unitaries, and it didn't actually hardly stack up. Three unitaries was a loss maker. So we sit here, I suppose today is about, right, fine, here, these are roughly the options, I think, you know, I look about, we've done, the University of Lincoln has done a lot down in Hole Beach, and yeah, great, looking at automation, looking at a lot of good stuff, and they've built a lot of, well, I wouldn't say factories, but research centres, every time I go there, there never seems to be anybody there, and actually, how you get there from Lough, you can't even catch a bus down the A16 to Boston. So we're not joined up, and I think most people accept that when I speak to them, you know, you can't get here and you can't get there, and, you know, even Grimsby was on about, oh, we're going to have a special day in our centre of Grimsby on a Sunday, and somebody spoke, and said, yeah, but you'll not get anybody there that's reliant on public transport because no buses on a Sunday. So here we are, trying to discuss this. I think, my personal view, if we have to go for it, it should be option two, it should be split straight down the river with them, and actually, and we whip round accordingly and have to take East and West Lindsay and form the North. I think that is a very complicated arrangement, because you're talking about stripping out three, I don't know how many councils, actually, I think it's five, actually, by the time you've got North, North East, East Lindsay, West Lindsay, you've in effect got three different layers of local government on a, from a point of view of upper tier in terms of school and adults. So that really is going to be a real complicated mix to sort that out, and hence why I'd have always gone to one, because it's a lot easier for LCC to have rolled out its Adults and Children's Services right across and allowed North and North East to adapt it, would make a lot more sense in this whole scheme. Everything else will just evolve anyway, because it's just really district council issues of planning and refuge collection, so that's not really that difficult to align and bring together. It's a shame, but you know what's more of a shame? Here we are, talking about local government reform, actually, everything should be on the table. If they're going to look at us individually, how come they are that thick and can't actually look at us individually and are telling us to actually set our divisions out on X district council boundaries which they then want to get rid of? You know, it's a joke. I think we should put our best case forward, what we really do think, I mean, at the end of the day, there's no reason why we couldn't be one unitary, 1.1 million people, I mean, you look how many district councillors, county councillors and parish councillors we've got compared to MPs that run the whole country, we've perhaps got 600 councillors in the whole of Greater Lincolnshire, and everyone says it's too big. Well, actually, it's not too big, the only difference between us is a stretch of road which tends to be a long road between two cities or two large towns. Other than that, all the towns and cities are all the same, we need inward investment and we should operate as one. And actually, if I'm honest, I see really a bright future for the Humber Bank and what's going on with Scunthorpe, what's going on with Grimsby and what's going on with our Lincolnshire coastline, there is a lot happening and the future is bright. So actually, for me, you know what, if you live at Lough, you'll get taken to Grimsby Hospital before you get taken to Lincoln, and Lincoln's part of ULHT, so it shows the madness of everything here, and I think we need to put forward our best case, unfortunately, the best option, which is one unitary and then redefine the mayor's rollover, because there's still a unique point for the mayor to have that strategic vision, and there's a need perhaps to have somebody voted in by the people to represent the people, so you still get all of that. And actually, why can't we just alter things? Just, it's not set in stone, because we're about to rip the whole book up and redefine it, so we should put our best case forward, and it's a shame that the unitary is, one unitary's taken off the agenda, because actually it is still the best, most efficient solution for Greater Lincolnshire, and everyone feels part of Greater Lincolnshire. Thank you.
Matt, please.
Thank you, Chairman. The White Paper sets out government's vision for the future of local government with two different types of authority. One is a strategic authority, which is going to be based on either a combined authority or a combined county authority with an elected mayor. The second is for a principal authority, a unitary level of local government. The government is trying to, in their words, complete the map, they want to see strategic authorities in place across the whole of England, okay? In order to do that, you have to have something to combine, it's a combined authority, it needs to have two different or more principal authorities, unitary councils going forwards. So on a Greater Lincolnshire geography, if you recognise that as the geography for your strategic authority, for your elected mayor, for all of your economic development and growth activity, for your skills, transport, et cetera, in order to retain that geography at that level, you would need to have a number of authorities that can be combined to make that strategic authority. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. The point Commissioner Marfleet makes, notwithstanding what Matthew's just said, the point that Commissioner Marfleet makes on one unitary, I absolutely endorse that and actually agree with you wholeheartedly on that, in an ideal world, agree with you, it should be one unitary for the whole area, but unfortunately, as you've said, and as Matt alludes to, that's not on the table, which personally, like yourself, I think is a mistake. I think we're, the parameters we've been given are actually going to undermine the process, and eventually, I think, long term, that conversation will be had, the issue is what happens in the interim. You mentioned ULHT, and I'll touch on it briefly, Chairman, and it's a shame Commissioner Macy isn't here, but both he and I sat on the Humber acute services review, and that was an absolute farce, it was a mess, and I would not want your residents, my residents, to have to go and be under that ICB because it was a farce. The veterans, which is a legal requirement, were not even considered until myself and fellow councillor raised this in a meeting, they then hurriedly went and apparently did a consultation, it didn't work very well because there wasn't due consideration, we in Lincolnshire weren't even considered at all in consultation until after that meeting, because Commissioner Macy and myself and Commissioner Bunny raised that and said, hang on, you've gone to Hull for these consultation events, they're not even impacted, we're impacted more than they are, we weren't even considered, which is why I, and I expect that you disagree with that, but that's why I hold the view that I do, that personally, I think, East and West Lindsay, if we're going to do this, and it's actually a genuine thing about efficiency and area and mass to be effective, then we as a county need to stay whole, because you are changing boundaries to an artificial concept that nobody is connected to, that services will be disrupted and planning is exceedingly complicated, and if you, especially in central Lincolnshire, because there's City Lincoln, West Lindsay and NKR under the CLLP, if West Lindsay leaves and is forced into North and North East Lincolnshire, how do we fit into their planning structure? They're going to need a new local plan, that's going to take 18 months at least, and so you'll have planning applications that come through the back door that shouldn't, because there's no proper plan in place that's effective, which is why I think if the government are serious about, they want economies of scale and don't want disruption, we should be allowed as a county to stay whole, that's what certainly the residents I've spoken to want, they want to be part of Lincolnshire, as in the authority boundary, and stay whole, but I agree with you entirely, in the ideal world, we'd have one unitary for the whole of Greater Lincolnshire, because that is the best economic value for the county, it works because then there's no division between North and South, and we are one county, but as Matthew said, unfortunately, that is off the table unless Commissioner Hill and other leaders are able to negotiate that with government behind closed doors, and unfortunately, I can't see that, I wish they could, and as you said, then reorientate the mayor and how that works, because I think that is actually, as you've said, for the reasons you've articulated, the best option, but it seems to be off the table and the government aren't willing to consider it, unfortunately.
Thank you. Commissioner Dill, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I first recognise the work done here by Matthew and his team, and no doubt wider, but also the work being done in the seven districts across the county to get to this point, to meet what I believe is the government's crazy timetable for local government reorganisation that was only revealed at Christmas and gave us only weeks to prepare proposals for such a massive change, and I think we'd all agree with that. I'd like to say a few things about the process, and then outline why I believe the favoured options proposed before us today for the biggest changes in half a century in the way we're governed are both seriously flawed. And finally, I'd like to propose what I believe is a more workable, a less remote, a more democratic place-based alternative which delivers on all the government's stated reorganisation criteria and which I believe should be given proper consideration both today and by the special full council on Friday. So firstly, the process. I don't recall any of the party manifestos in last year's general election promising the biggest upheaval in local government for 50 years, and that's what it is. I don't recall any politician mentioning that within months of coming to power, they'd start the process of binning all existing county councils and all district councils that have together been serving communities, our communities, since 1974, which was, of course, the last top-down local government reorganisation, when our historic counties of Kestevan, Lindsay and Holland were mothballed and Lincolnshire County Council itself was created, along with the seven districts that serve residents today. At the time, of course, as Commissioner Marfleet says, the new county of Humber Side emerged in an effort to stitch together Hull with Scunthorpe, Grimsby and Immingham. That marriage was doomed from the start, and barely, we all knew that, and barely a decade later, Humber Side itself was scrapped, and now, of course, we have two unitaries, North Lincolnshire and North East Lincolnshire, despite their names and history, neither of which are in the administrative county of Lincolnshire, not even in the East Midlands region. So that was the last time we faced such widespread local government reorganisation, with massive implications on how our local communities and the residents, we are privileged to represent- implications on how our local communities and the residents we are privileged to represent are governed and provided with what we know at least as local services. So here we are again, a new government pressing ahead with another massive local government reorganisation with undue haste, under the illusion, in my opinion, that somehow scrapping district councils and replacing them with so-called unitaries covering an area three or even four times bigger will lead to more efficient local services that will save millions of pounds. That's what they said in 1974. It might be good and suit big cities, but I fear for huge rural areas like Lincolnshire, it's complete nonsense. It risks creating gigantic, remote, faceless councils with a massive democratic deficit. For years, both the big parties of government have been forcing so-called devolution down our throats, telling us the whole idea was to bring decision-making much closer to the residents whose lives are affected by the decisions made. In my view, the current government's dash to impose local government reorganisation is turning so-called devolution on its head. There's a real danger it will even take the word 'local' out of local government. There really is no evidence that bigger is better. But the government rationale suggests that bigger councils would be raw resilient to financial shocks. Well, that theory didn't hold for Birmingham, one of the most recent large unitaries to issue a section 114 notice effectively declaring bankruptcy. In fact, as research by Professor Colin Copas has shown, there is no correlation between the size of a council and section 114 notices or appeals by struggling councils for a financial bailout by the government. Nor is there any evidence of an optimal size for local government. One size really doesn't fit the needs of every area. Of course, we can't stick our heads in the sand. We have to come up, as colleagues have said, with what we believe is the best solution to deliver local services to our residents whilst meeting the government criteria. I note, by the way, in the paper, over and over and even today, talk of that this proposal is scrapping two-tier councils or two-tier local authorities and creating a single tier. It's complete nonsense. In fact, what it is, it's scrapping the existing two-tier system and creating a new two-tier system, but bigger. Remember, we've just created the mayoral combined authority that nobody wanted, except the government. The idea of rolling the existing seven districts in with the existing county council into one gigantic unitary, I hear what colleagues are saying, it would create one of the largest unitaries yet to be established, both in terms of population and of course of vast area. I'd still be able to travel from my division in Deepings East to Westminster quicker than I could get to the northern reaches of the existing county council. It doesn't make sense. It's not local. One unitary serving more than three-quarters of a million residents, 783,000 residents, which is more than two-thirds of the population of the whole new combined mayoral authority, has serious flaws in its very design, whether or not we want it or not. It will effectively, if we did that, it will effectively evolve into a regional authority in its own right, challenging the role and the dynamic of the mayoral authority that's just been set up. And from the start, it would lead to leadership rivalries between the two authorities, particularly, of course, if the leadership of the gigantic unitary was of a different political stripe to the elected mayor. Imagine that. That can't happen, can it? The north-south two-unitary model with a northern unitary, as is suggested, with a northern unitary serving 704,000 residents, with a southern unitary serving 436,000, also has flaws. It surely makes more sense to join the existing unitaries in the north and then form two more equally sized unitaries serving the existing seven districts and the existing county of Lincolnshire. I can see the flaws of the three-unitary east-west model that has been discounted and understand why it has been discounted. However, I believe there is a less flawed alternative which is due to be made public today by South Kesteven District Council, on which I serve. It's a three-unitary model which meets all the criteria demanded by government and presents a more balanced, more manageable population divide with all the, all with less negative democratic deficit. I do not believe it would be more costly to set up. I hear the figures that have been suggested on the options, but I mean, I think they need looking at more closely and I don't believe that three would be more, much more costly than setting up two and there's evidence to back that up. So that would leave, sorry, I've forgotten where I've gone. So firstly, the South Kesteven alternative agrees with the starting point in option one before us today.
Can I just establish, is councillor Dilks here as county councillor or a delegate from SKDC?
No, I'm not a delegate. I'm wearing my county council hat and I'm careful to do that, Martin.
Well, it doesn't sound much like it to me, Phil.
Well, I think I'm entitled to give what I think is an alternative and as colleagues have said, all alternatives should be carefully considered. I'll continue if I may. As I say, I agree with the starting point in option one before us. They are, after all, the North and North East, already relatively small unitaries. It may make sense for them to join. That leaves the existing county council area, which would be formed, in my view, in the best option, with two similar-sized unitaries. In the north, I believe it makes sense to join East and West Lindsay, Boston and the city of Lincoln. That would give a population of 418,000 at current levels, to form Lindsay, Lincoln and Boston. And then in the south, to rejoin North and South Kesteven and include South Holland. There's also a strong case to include Rutland, which has an economic synergy with the south of Lincolnshire and for that reason was historically part of the Greater Lincolnshire Local Enterprise Partnership.
With all due respect, councillor Dilks, we cannot go across boundaries from what government has said. Can you clarify that, please, Matt?
Thank you, Chairman. I believe it is open for discussion, but the statutory invitation that we've received doesn't include Rutland, so we're not looking to bring forward a proposal for that area.
Thank you, councillor.
If I can, thank you. I hear the point you make from the chair, but my understanding is that civil servants and the minister have said that they are open to these suggestions. Can I, I'm nearly there, if I may, I'm last couple of paragraphs. Including Rutland would certainly make sense from a future planning and housing provision perspective, which are some of the criteria the government want, given its location butting right into Stamford. It also makes sense, I believe, from a transport perspective, bringing Rutland's dozen or so miles of the A1 into line with a unitary which would connect the A1 from Stamford up to Newark into a single unitary. I believe this suggestion offers the best solution forward to meet all the government's demands and also retains a sense of local place for our residents and importantly, has less impact on democratic accountability than the other options before us today. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dilks. Councillor Brockway, please.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a very, very interesting discussion because it's just supporting what I came in thinking, actually. I agree completely with councillor Dilks about the rush and I'm going to talk about that in a moment. One of the things that really worries me, that a decision of this magnitude means we should have in front of us all necessary detailed information needed so that we can make a reasoned decision. That is not the case. We have very experienced councillors saying there should be two, there should be one, there should be three. But me sitting here, let's, I'll be Joe Public just for the moment, sitting here and saying, on what basis are you putting forward these proposals? If you go for three, two, one, where will adult social care sit? How will you run this aspect of the council? Who will be in charge of highways? Where will I go? And as a councillor sitting here, I would like some of that information. If we're going to, I'm fully aware that we're looking at the big strategic picture at the moment, but the big strategic picture does actually, does need to include detail when we're talking about this momentous change. One thing that worries me particularly is that the unseemly haste which councillor Dilks has raised, the unseemly haste, the speed, we were written to on the 16th of December, we had to respond by the middle of January. That did not give any council time to go to public consultation. Why would a government, the behaviour of the government is bizarre. Why would they do it in such a way that the councils involved haven't got time to go out to consultation to the people who should be involved? And particularly as that was done over the Christmas period when everything shuts down anyway. So that's my first worry. Another worry is, government is talking all about numbers and not people. People are sitting in this. We've got community cohesions, we've got loyalties, we've got histories. You separate one village from another and you can cut through hundreds of years of community work and relationships. There's a significant lack of information. We are very clear that they're going to do this regardless of whether we want it or not. They're going to go for unitaries, at least that is my belief, on the basis of the information. But because of the lack of information, we've got councils and different councillors jumping every which way. Some want to go to, along with Rutland. West Lindsay's just written in or is writing in saying they don't want a mega council. And so there's low, and one council leader decided he hadn't gone to consultation, so he withdrew his support. That doesn't happen when people are given proper information. So my big worry here is that we are being asked, we're being bulldozed actually by the government into making hugely important decisions when there has been a complete failure by them to give us the information we need to know how they expect their decision to pan out. This is their decision. Have they got the local information? Is there evidence that they've actually looked at Lincolnshire's histories and needs, the roads, the rurality?
Sorry, councillor Brockway, whose phone's ringing?
I'm sorry. It's not mine, I don't think. Okay. Easily done, isn't it? Anyway, so that I was pretty much at the end anyway, but also I do have a question, please. What happens to all the parish and town councils in the middle of all this? Where is their place, you know? Thank you ever so much, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for your remarks, councillor. I think we can all agree that the timeline that's been set out by government is ambitious to take 21 areas through reorganisation at the pace that's set out in the papers is clearly ambitious. And there's an awful lot more detailed work that needs to be done. And the intention is that there will then be engagement locally within Lincolnshire on those options as we take forward that work. Obviously, at the moment, we've been given this deadline of March and as you rightly described, there hasn't been the opportunity to engage with residents, businesses, partners. We have, we're obviously engaging with elected members, there are discussions between leaders of councils in the background, but there is definitely and very clearly a stage that we need to go through. At the moment, obviously, we're about to go into a pre-election period as well, so now is not the right time to do that. But as we bring forward the detail, the intention is there would be local engagement with residents on those options. The government also needs to carry out consultation on the proposal when it's submitted as well, so there will be a second stage, but it will be for them to define what that process involves. In terms of, sorry, town and parish councils as well, the proposal, the information that we've put together so far, there are, there are no options in there for any changes to existing towns and parish councils, but what there will need to be consideration of is in those areas that are not currently parished, are there arrangements that need to be put in place? And the interim plan suggests that we'll work with those communities to look at what is the most appropriate form of local governance going forward. Is it that some of those areas should be parished? Is it that actually within a unitary council, there should be some more localised decision-making arrangements? There's a range of things to be worked through and explored.
Thank you, councillor Hill, please.
I mean, I do remember years ago when we're in this chamber and the late, great Rob Parker was sat there and I think there was some dispute going on between Lincolnshire County Council and the city council. He very eloquently made a very strong point. When you sit in this chamber, you sit here as an elected member of the county council. You are not a delegate from some other council and bringing your views. And I think he was quite correct in that. And I think, I fully respect that other councils, I'm sure, will be putting their own proposals forward in the light of what they think's best for their council. I stress best for their council, not best for the public. But I'll just make that point very politely, that I think we all need to remember, getting the right hat on in the right place would be a good idea. I'll just summarise where, because there was talk about, I think councillor Marfleet said, well, why can't we just have one unitary for the whole of Greater Lincolnshire? Well, unfortunately, we, to have a mayoral combined authority, you need at least two councils to qualify for that. So I think unfortunately that just can't happen unless you found somewhere like Rutland to become the other council, which I don't think would be sensible. I think, so I do think we are, again, repeat, this is not our decision. This is all that's happening at the moment is, proposals will be put forward. So what we're doing today and what the council will have to do on Friday, from a county council perspective, put forward proposals which we think are in the best interest of the residents of our county. So I think that just needs to be very carefully remembered. Now councillor Dilks, I normally agree with him on many things, but I have to say, there are so many wrong statements that he made in his speech there that I'm struggling to remember them all. First of all, the proposal he put forward doesn't fit any, doesn't fit any, none of the criteria which the government has put forward. It doesn't fit the criteria in population, it doesn't fit the criteria in terms of services. And I think we should remember from a county council point of view, and I think councillor Brockway said that, on his proposal, the big services, the important, the vital services which this council provides and North and North East, that is, social care services, highways, the big services, fire and rescue, all of those really important services which are life and death actually for many, many people. Under this proposal, we'd end up with three different, the county councils, big services would all be chopped up into three different, well, two pieces, if you like. Not only would that be massively disruptive, it would also be massively expensive. And as you've seen, he is saying, well, I don't accept these figures from Price Waterhouse Coopers, one of the most respected finance consultants in the country, and he just, with a wave of the hand, oh, well, those are wrong, there are other figures. Well, please come forward with these other figures, we'll wait with interest to see what they are. The only thing I would have a lot of sympathy with him on is the issue with Rutland and Stamford. And I think there is a very valid point, which I think has been put forward by councillor Cleaver, that there is a synergy there. The problem we have is that, I know, in theory, you know, if the government were to overlook the issue about the mayoral combined boundaries, we have asked Rutland and they are actually not interested in talking to Lincolnshire, they are actually talking to the districts in Leicestershire. So I'm not sure, unless something comes forward with a change of heart from their officers, I'm not sure that you do need two willing partners. Finally, can I say, there is a lot of talk about, oh, the minister said this, the minister said that. And we do know that ministers are very adept at speaking, making the right noises to the audience they are in front of. I would suggest we can only go on the written, the written, in writing, we all got a letter and it set out the criteria in black and white. The minister hasn't changed that, hasn't sent a further amended, or by the way, I've now changed my mind. So I think we can only base our judgement on what is written in writing. And I'll say, I come back to the proposals, the three-unitary proposal which councillor Dilks espoused, that doesn't fit any of the, any of them and it will be very expensive, very disruptive and according to Price Waterhouse Cooper, will take about 10 years to get back. The other thing I would... The other thing I would say, he totally misunderstands the role of the mayor or combined authority, uh, which some people are putting forward. The mayor combined authority is not, uh, sitting there, oh, to, uh, judge and decide what the other councils do. Its job there is to actually, uh, take control and combined authority is the important word. So it's the mayor and the other, other important people like the councils and the police and crime commissioner and business community, they together will decide the, why this investment comes for Lincolnshire. They will decide in terms of strategic planning, uh, how many numbers of houses the government is going to impose on the Greater Lincolnshire. So they will take those strategic decisions. They are not, and they should not become a delivery organisation because if that was the case, then all you're doing is replacing one sort of two-tier with another sort of two-tier. So I do think it's very important that we understand the role of the combined authority. So you'll have a combined authority and you'll have unitary authorities working with, not underneath, working with the combined authority, delivering the frontline services, but also making sure with the mayor combined authority, they oversee the investment which is currently decided by civil servants. So I, I think, I come back to the original point, from a county council perspective, this is the recommendation we put for, I would suggest we put forward, uh, from our perspective. It's obviously up to this group in the committee to take its own view on that. Aware that others will put, uh, their own proposals put forward and it then will be up to the government to decide. They will then, once they've done that, go out, they will, it's their decision, they will be the ones who have to consult, which will they do, uh, and will take it from there. So I think, I just remind members, please remember you are sitting here as county councils, not coming here as a, a representative of somebody else. Uh, and bear that in mind and, you know, that, that's where I'd leave it. So I think the two options being put forward, I mean, there could be other variations of, you know, to get the population right, you could have parts of, um, you know, you could have one district council going with the two northern uni- I mean, these are all details which I think are too early at this stage, I think we're all, uh, what the government's wanting is principles at the moment, so we make sure that, uh, they have a view, they might decide none of it. So they don't like any of our proposals and they'll come up with something completely different. But I, I just think, uh, we need to, you know, you need to recommend as a, as county councils, what you feel is the best solution for the residents of this county. Thank you chairman, thank you chairman.
Thank you leader. Um, you bring me into my question before we go to councillor Marfleet and councillor Key. Mine relates to the P W C, the Price Waterhouse Coopers analysis. Um, it does say it's a high level analysis, but I'm just wondering how the methodology has come around um, to give that detailed, um, information because obviously it's quite widespread. I mean, the information that would be provided is on the basis of what, that's, that's the thing because it's, there's quite a lot of different figures being taken into that, so I'm just wondering if you can explain that for me Andrew, please.
Yeah, I'll take that councillor Stoke. So, um, the, the figures that we've used from P W C, obviously councillor Hill's already referred to them. It's based on a national study that's been updated a number of times i- in recent years. Uh, P W C have been heavily involved in various, uh, local government reorganisations over a number of years now. And this study has been, uh, refreshed and renewed as it's gone through that process and built a body of evidence to demonstrate the benefits and the costs of, of, of L G R. Um, how, how the numbers work for, for Lincolnshire in this space and, and indeed how the modelling works is that, um, uh, building up its national study, um, it's used widely available data for Lincolnshire, its districts and the, the two northern unitaries, uh, both in terms of its staffing costs, its number of democratically elected representatives and various other spend data to come to, come to the, uh, to be plugged into the model. But its, its basic premise is, it looks at, um, uh, the costs or the best, sorry, the benefits of aggregating councils predominantly, so that's, uh, reducing senior, um, uh, officers. So, you know, uh, a councillor only needs one of me, not eight of them over a specific geography for example. Uh, less councillors, uh, less properties and savings from, uh, I guess, building synergies between similar like services. It then also looks at cost of dig, uh, costs of disaggregation as well when we compare uh, different sizes of councils and this comes to the point of debate, I guess, between councillor Dilks and councillor Hill. There is a strong body of evidence that shows that, um, breaking up big county council services costs money and costs money, uh, in the long run. And we've got plenty of, uh, examples of that from recent L G Rs around Cumbria and Northamptonshire, uh, to give examples. Now coming back to the model that's presented here, so we've discounted the three council, uh, model in, uh, using this modelling because of those costs and the costs run up into the, uh, hundreds of millions, I think, in terms of disaggregating and uh, uh, breaking up those strong, low-cost, um, people-based services that we have at the county council. That left us with the two options that we've got on the table, both, uh, so option one, which is the county continuing authority and the north and south option. Now, in the long term, uh, the way that the P W C model works is because it's over a consistent geography, um, the savings that it ultimately accrues for either model will be the same because you have two sets of leadership teams, uh, a relative uniform set of member, uh, members, uh, two HQs, et cetera, et cetera. It's just the pace with which you get there to deliver those savings. And that's where the difference in, in the benefits between the two of them become because it acknowledges that the county councils, some county council services, and I think councillor Hill talked about it before, some county council services would need to be broken up and put into the northern authority. Um, and that's, that's the, that's the basic premise really. I think the other point to make is that, um, in both of those options, the, obviously the savings that would accrue from, from either would sit more in one area than the other because, um, the north and south option creates a, a, a cleaner population split, meeting the criteria that the government have set out. But, um, uh, I guess a more even spread of the cost and savings in those two options. Uh, and I think, underlining all of that, as we progress through this process, we would, we would say, and strongly say it in the resources comments in the report, a lot more, uh, modelling and, and detailed, uh, analysis would be required. So hopefully that answers your question.
No, that's, that's great, thank you Andrew. Uh, councillor Marfleet, please.
Thank you. Um, well, there's been some very interesting, uh, comments and discussions made and, uh, and I agree with a lot of what Jackie says. Um, it's sort of all put together very quickly and, um, bang, hey ho. Uh, and if we looked at the options, the exploring by, um, Price P W C, technically they favoured whatever's been put, so we can't see any other costings in relation to other options. If this was a pylons going down the east coast, we'd be challenging it very quickly indeed. There isn't, as we've just heard, other option. We could have a Greater Lincolnshire Unitary and a combined authority with, as councillor Dilks says, our neighbouring county council. Now whether that works, we don't know, we ain't got any costings. There is the other sense here, you see, my big worry behind all of this is when you look at option two, which is the best on the table, I think here, I think it is so complicated, I think the government would just think, you know what, actually putting all those, putting Wes Lindsay, East Lindsay and Grimsby and Scunthorpe all together with three different adult services, and adults is one of the biggest services and should be. In some sense, I think that will become such a challenge that I think there's a risk that this will collapse for Lincolnshire and be kicked into the long grass. And I think that we will potentially miss an opportunity because of the complicatedness of trying to address three different upper-tier authorities for the north unitary. That's where the risk lies in that collapse. There is of course another option, that we look at maybe shifting an element of it into a mayor's role, i.e. trying to actually unify adult social care right across Greater Lincolnshire. If there was one service that would benefit, that would be one. I mean, highways, you know what, you're not long out of Grimsby before you're into, uh, Lincolnshire County Council, there's not many highways. When you look at the highways agenda and we've got five and a half thousand miles of road, actually what Grimsby and, uh, Scunthorpe's left with is perhaps only about thirty percent, if that, maybe even twenty percent in the scheme of things. But adult social care is the golden nugget that no one wants to see broken up and children's services, well. So in some sense, is there an option to give a bit more to a mayor to let us keep a better options on the table? And we all talk about different tiers of authority. We now have a mayor, so that's one. And we're having another one which is going to be underneath, so it'll still be at two, but we'll just be streamer, lighter and more focused. And I just think that there's options here to maybe shift a bit more to the mayor like adults so that we can actually go down a better scenario of two. The, but, but the whole thing is, I think the risk is that we will get the best option kicked out to the long grass because I think it's so complicated trying to amalgamate three adult social cares and I think that's the risk.
Thank you for that, uh, councillor Key, please.
Thank you chairman. Um, it's really interesting this of course and it is so important as everybody said. Um, Jackie mentioned, um, the rush at the beginning and I must admit, I really agree with everything she said. Um, I really like a television programme called The Apprentice, which I'm sure people have seen. Um, they come up with some new product and they get everything done and then they go out to consultation with the public to see what they think when it's too late basically. And that's the whole, how the programme works. And I agree with what Jackie said about the fact that this has been rushed through and the public haven't been asked really what they want. Because if you ask the public, some of them might say, well, actually we quite like it, as it is, thank you very much. Um, and that wasn't ever really an option and that's the government saying that, that's, they're entitled to do that, I suppose, because they're in charge. Um, but I do think this rush is a really big problem, you know, we fifty year, after fifty years, most people that you actually speak to don't, still don't know what council does what, you know, and that's fifty years later. So this needs to be carefully thought about. Um, the option one, which is basically keeping everything, um, in, in our Lincolnshire part of the deal as, as it is. Um, somebody said to me, oh, that's just the county council taking over the district councils. Well, that's easily answered really because the county council won't exist either. Um, this is a brand new authority that's being, um, considered and, and to be honest, it will involve a lot less disruption to these vital services, I mean, that's obvious. Um, the adult social care, I sat on that committee, uh, for three years and it is a complicated thing. And, uh, fire services complicated, children's services, which I've not, not had much to do with, they'll be equally as complicated. So we must bear in mind that anything like this is going to affect people's lives. And so I'm all for reducing the complications and the disruption. And option one would certainly do that for this part of the county. The only bit that concerns me about that is the numbers and I came back to what I said at the beginning, that the numbers don't quite balance between the two northern unitary authorities and the main part of Lincolnshire. And I'd just be concerned that money, um, that we've always lacked in this part of the country gets diverted elsewhere, bearing in mind we will have far more people. We always get the raw end of the deal and I think it, we, we really need to be careful we don't set ourselves up for more of the same. But on the whole, looking at the options and bearing in mind everything that councillor Hill said about disruption, uh, option one certainly for me makes the most sense, thank you.
Thank you for that. Do we have any further comments councillor Smith, please?
Thank you chairman. Uh, going back to what councillor Brokway said about lack of consultation and how this has been done, uh, I don't think the government knows what it's doing, to be quite blunt. I think they've come up with this because they think this is a magic golden but goose or silver bullet and it's going to solve all local governments problems. Well, I hate to tell you, it ain't. It isn't going to make a difference, as councillor Dilks mentioned, Birmingham went bust, it was the biggest council in Europe. So I, I, I take his point that bigger, bigger isn't better, uh, I fully take that on board. But we, we are here because we are being, councillor Brokway mentioned bulldozed, I'd go further, we have a gun to our head. And they're going to pull the trigger whether we want them to or not, unfortunately. Um, they don't want consultation because they know the public are going to turn around and say, well, actually, it ain't broke, don't fix it, it's a funding issue, it's not a structural issue. Um, and they don't want that unfortunately, uh, because that will give them the answer they don't want. Uh, they're not interested in consultation, they're interested, much like N S I Ps, of pushing this through, ramming it down our throat whether we want it or not because they think they know best. Well, again, they don't. They probably couldn't, civil servants probably couldn't find Lincolnshire on a bleeding map chairman, never mind understand the complexities of Lincolnshire and what we deal with and our residents deal with. Uh, and this is the frustration, it's top-down, it's not bottom-up. And it should, these things should be bottom-up, never top-down. With whatever, uh, model you use, it should always be bottom-up, never top-down because top-down doesn't work. You've seen it with the National Health Service and, and other complex bodies chairman. Top-down does not work, but what they're doing, they're doing this because they think, oh, councils will be easier to manage and the, the justification, other justification they like to use chairman is, oh, well, if we get rid of the district councils, they won't refuse planning applications so much. That shows the total ignorance chairman, and it is ignorance, that they don't understand the system they're supposed to govern. Because I'll tell you right now, it won't make the blindest bit of difference. Because you, if you have decent councillors on this new body, whatever construct it is, they will still do the right thing and they will still say when a development isn't acceptable, no, it's not happening. And it will still go to a planning inspector, you'll still have a huge backlog because there aren't sufficient planning inspectors. And obviously, and, and it's been in the, the press chairman, there is the new, uh, infrastructure and planning bill and there are concerns from councillors that that basically removes our right to refuse planning applications. Uh, not surprised in the least, um, that, that they're doing that because again, they think they know best, well, they don't. They're, they're trying to concrete over Lincolnshire with solar farms or houses because they sit and say, oh, we have a housing crisis, we don't, we have an immigration issue, we have a population crisis, because when the size of Birmingham comes into a country this small, where are they going? And you can only build on land once and once it's gone, guess what, it's gone. And we still need to feed ourselves and we aren't feeding ourselves because as the NFU say, we have less than fif- uh, less than, we only have just over half, sorry, of our food needs met, um, nationally. And you've seen with the, the events, uh, in the world chairman recently, what happens when that is the case. Um, as I said at planning and reg chairman, uh, should there, God forbid, ever be a situation like the Second World War, we're not going to be able to feed ourselves and we will starve. And the government needs to get their head out of their backside, to be blunt chairman, and, uh, acknowledge food security is, uh, is now a national security issue, as is energy because we haven't had a coherent energy policy in my thirty years of living. Uh, and no, no party have done that chairman, that's not a party political point, it's a fact, no government have sorted that out. This will not resolve the problem chairman, this will just move the goalpost and kick it, kick the can down the road because what we actually need is sustainable funding in local government because too many governments, again of both colours, have not acknowledged what local government does, how much we do and what we actually do for our residents. And I'll touch briefly on social care chairman, I've said this before and I'll say it again, we never, as a local government, should have been lumbered with that. We are not health professionals. Why are we being asked to do something that the NHS used to do and has more money than we have ever had in local government? Now, yes, they are ineffectual, they are ineffective. That is an NHS problem because of how it's governed, how it's structured. That is not justification chairman, as was done, to go to local government and say, oh, you can deal with that, but we're not going to give you any money to deal with that, we're going to expect you to raise it through taxation. When actually what we should be dealing with, which is what our residents always come back to us chairman is, we've got riparian drainage ditches that need, need work or need attention. And to be fair, uh, in my, my division chairman, I, I can't thank, uh, Richard Fenwick and the team enough, they have been absolutely fantastic and I owe them a huge debt of, of gratitude because they've been marvellous. It's taken a long time, but we're getting there and that's been done through the investment that we as a council have made. Uh, the other thing is obviously highways chairman, we, that is the primary thing that all residents come to us and say, when does that pothole getting fixed? Why is the path in estate? Why isn't it, why haven't we rebuilt it, why haven't we resurfaced it? Where, and then you have to have that conversation chairman of, well, over half our budget goes on home-to-school transport because the legislation's a hundred years old and needs updating because it's not effective, it's not relevant to the modern world. The second and third is children's, uh, services and adult social care. They're our three biggest budgets, that's where most of our money goes before we even get to highways, before we even get to anything else we want to do. If we had the option to invest money that is currently in adult social care that we are, we've been lumbered with through NHS ineffectiveness, imagine what we could do for drainage in this county, the highways, children's services or other, other services in this county. services in this county. And that is actually the conversation we should be having with government, not reorganisation, it should be. You want us to be locally representative and do our job? Well, actually, give us the power to do it. If you want true devolution, and I understand where Andrew Percy was coming from, if you want true devolution, give us the power, get out the way. Don't tell us how to spend the monies, to say, we have an amount, that is your funding, you can spend it as you please, in any manner you so please, but don't come to us if it goes wrong. Whereas at the minute, with certain things, Chairman, we sit here, we have some power, but not enough to actually implement or alter certain things, because it's prescriptive in legislation. And if it goes wrong, we still get blamed, because the government go, oh, it's your problem, you mismanaged it. It isn't. The legislation is out of date. And actually, it shouldn't be about structural reorganisation, it should be about genuine devolution, which is more power comes down to either us and the districts, rather than a another entity, be it the combined authority, whatever. It should be right, there's your money, get on and do it. That's what true devolution is, is power devolved down, not reorganisation and structural tinkering to try and solve a problem that basically is due to lack of funding. If we were given the power, Chairman, we could actually do a better job than government, as we've proven countless times before. Because when we spend money, we get better value for money, because we know how our local area works and how to deliver services for local people on the ground. And that's what the government should be doing. But they're not interested in that, because that actually means they get power taken from them, which is what they don't want, because they think they know better than the people who are sitting in this room, who are elected by the residents of Lincolnshire. And frankly, Chairman, they don't. And that should be the conversation, not reorganisation. But unfortunately, we are where we are.
Thank you for those comments. Councillor Brockway, please.
Wow, follow that. Unlike councillor Smith, I think the government knows exactly what it's doing. But I don't know why it's doing it in this way. Anybody who puts in strategic planning knows that you have to have your basis in place before you can recommend. You do need to see the bigger picture. But before you can put it to an actionable stage, you do need to have your evidence, your figures, your facts and the effects on the local community, which we are missing. I think we need to find out, if we possibly can, much more about the government's core thinking, so that we can have a more rational base to inform our thinking and to give us greater clarity, so that we can pass that on to our residents. If you think about it, if I decide now that I'm going to go along to councillor Dilk's on my right here and say, right councillor Dilk, you're going to buy a house, I'm going to offer you three, you do not have a choice, you are going to buy this house, I'm not going to give you time to ask your family, and by the way, I'm not going to give you time to look inside either. You'd think I was absolutely nuts. But that's what we are being asked to do. I'm sure that it's not about that, I'm sure there's a lot more information out there. But, you know, when we put our proposal in on March 21st, how much detail will we have on it, so that we can base our argument? I have huge concerns over this. But the motive about why the government, which will know perfectly well the need for consultation and detail, why are they pushing such a huge strategic change and practical change on the people of the entire country? Do you know what? I think it's about control. I think it just comes down to control, divide and conquer. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Do we have any further from the floor? No. So, I mean, I think what's been spoken this morning has really emphasised the need for more information from government. But the government are going to do what they want anyway, because they're the national government, and that's what they do. And if we don't put something forward, it could be imposed upon us. And that's the last thing we want as elected members of this authority. And the two options that are being put forward here are the two best available, given the time that we've been given. And breaking up all the services into the option two would prove extremely costly and tricky, according to PWC. So, yeah, so we're in a tough position at the moment, but we do need to put something forward for government, because the last thing we want is to be told what we're going to be doing and how we're going to be governed, because that is not conducive to good things for us. Any further comments from anyone? No? Councillor Smith?
Thank you, Chair. Given what you've just alluded to, Chairman, and what's been through, gone through the debate, notwithstanding councillor Marfleet's view on that, which I appreciate where he's coming from, would it not be prudent, in that instance, rather than giving the government an out to split the authority up, given the complexities and the disruption, that actually we put forward option one and do not give them the inkling that we would be happy with option two? Because I think the more rope you give them, Chairman, the more they'll try and hang us round it. That's all I'd say, Chairman.
Councillor Hill, do you have a comment on that?
I mean, none of these solutions, I mean, I fully accept that, fully agree that we are being rushed into a decision. And, or, it's not a decision, of course, it's a view, shall we say. So my view is that none of these is perfect. And I said at the beginning, it's a trade-off in the end, if you accept the two council solution between equal populations and minimising disruption. So personally, my advice would be, obviously it's entirely up to scrutiny committee, that we put both options forward. And at the end of the day, it is a government ministerial decision. It's their decision, not our decision.
Thank you for that, councillor Hill. Do we have views of the committee? Councillor Key?
Yes, I entirely agree with what Martin just said, but I just question, should it be the government decision at the end of the day? Should it be our decision? And can we not express a preference more for one option than the other? And that's probably something that will come out on Friday, of course, before me.
You're quite entitled to do that.
I mean, I would certainly, personally, having looked at it, prefer option one. But other people may prefer other things. But maybe as a council, as a county council, we should have a preferred option, so that that's clear, that on the whole, that is what we would like to happen, bearing in mind, we haven't got much choice.
Thank you for that, councillor Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. Given what councillor Key has just said and councillor Hill, I would go along with that and say that I would word it much stronger in the recommendation and say that our preference as a council is option one for continuity of service and also, as councillor Brockway said, continuity of history, of local distinctiveness, of ensuring that certain areas, as I alluded to, Chairman, before, a lot of residents feel that, certainly that I've spoken to, would feel we're being cast aside, essentially. So I would certainly want to protect from that. And so I would say that option one is the committee's preference. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Marfleet, please.
I think from a committee's point of view, it's about, right, this is the paper, this is where we are, and we let it go to the full council. I don't think it's beneficial for us to make a decision on either options at this point at this committee, because it's only a fraction of the council, and then the council's got a clear way in which it can go. The other thing is, you know, it talks about, we've made comments and notes, well, Martin Hill's in the room with us, so he's heard all our opinions and everything that's said. And being the way that this whole thing has gone, we have basically four days now, well, perhaps three, so to validate any other option. And that really ain't going to happen either at this late stage. But I do think that it would pay, maybe just to summarise some of the options, because if we're not careful, I think we're just going to end up with a sort of a bit of a bunfight in the council chamber, because everybody's going to have a slightly different opinion on this. And then there'll be those that won't want to commit to anything. And actually, the bottom line is, no one's worked up any other figures, so we can't justify any other option, really. But so my option would be is, could we actually just scout through and get any quick, just as a briefing note or something, just to, it would be nice to have the council actually come out with a majority and a bit of a guide for government, rather than look a riot, sort of, everybody's in different orders, and then we just give the government free rein to do as they feel that they want to do. And let's have no mistakes taken. This government is not very pro Lincolnshire.
I don't think it's pro anything other than cities, big cities, is it? So councillor Key?
Yes, sorry, I was just going to come back, because after what Hugo just said, I quite appreciate that perhaps we are only a small amount of the council, and maybe we shouldn't come forward with our personal choice of option one or two. But I think we could quite legitimately recommend that the full council does go forward with a preferred option, rather than a choice of options. And that surely is something that we can do as a scrutiny committee. Thank you.
Sorry, it's the leader of the council that will make the final decision. The council will be debating it on Friday, but it's the leader of the council will be making the decision. So your comments will be forwarded to the leader before that's moved.
Thank you. Could we suggest that the leader goes forward with the preferred option? Thank you.
Thank you for that, councillor Key. We've had a good debate on this item. Do we have any further comments from any of the committee members, board members? No, I can't see any hands raised. I am going to say, I will move that the board supports the recommendation to the leader of the council, as detailed on page 18, 19 of the report, and that includes putting both, all items that we've discussed forward on Friday. And I ask that our comments, as these have been captured by the scrutiny office, be shared with the leader of the council for his consideration. Obviously councillor Hill was here to hear the deliberation, anyway. So I'll propose that. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Brockway, all those in favour? Any abstentions against? One against. That would be noted for councillor Dilk's, please. Thank you for that. We'll now move on to item eight. This will take me two seconds. So the overview and scrutiny management board work programme. So the last report in APAX is on pages 63 to 70, and provides an overview of the contents of our own work programme. And our action is just to note its contents. There is no changes, so I move that the report be noted. Can you raise your hand if you agree, please? That is agreed. Thank you. So that closes the meeting. Thank you for your attendance this morning. Thank you.